Should I do my checks before?
So do I start or do I need to wait? Do I start or do I need to wait? Sandy, are we ready to go? That sounds good. Okay, welcome everyone to our planning commission meeting. Today is April tenth or ninth, sorry. And it is six oh one P M at the start of our meeting. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner South.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and do our roll call now, starting at my left. Barbie?
Uh, Barbie DeSoto, no conflicts.
And Alan, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
And Jonathan Hill, no conflicts. Before we start our meeting, I'd like to read a statement on decorum. Although this is a public hearing, only the presenters and those invited by the commission may speak or ask questions. Unless otherwise invited by the chair, please wait to speak until called on by the chair. When speaking, please be sure to speak into the microphone so the record is clear. Please state your name and city of residence for the record. Please limit side conversations as they interfere with the audio recording. If you need to have a side conversation, please step out of the chambers. Please do not attempt to interrupt or speak over people. Intimidating or threatening speech or behavior uh will not be tolerated at any time. Please refrain from clapping or cheering during the hearing. Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead to our first item this evening. Uh, item one, uh, the Provo City Council Office requests an ordinance amending the conservation and resiliency plan to include a new appendix committing Provo to be B-City USA affiliated. Uh, this is a citywide application and Hannah Salz will present this.
To be or not, I can't even take credit for the joke. That was Sandy. She told me to start with that. This is a really fun national program that is perfectly suited for what we do here in Utah, especially what we do in Provo. But there are no current B-City affiliates within Utah, which is a little bit odd. This program came across my desk because of Councilor Whipple. In the work meeting right after reviewing the conservation resiliency plan for adoption a year and a half ago, she put the idea on the table. We worked with experts. We reviewed the program. It fits what we're doing. Our Parks and Recreation team is a hundred percent on board. Their answer was whether we have a, an official affiliated city recognition or not, this is the work that we're doing. So it doesn't add much work for the city, only a reporting element that Parks has said that they're happy to adopt. The full requirements and other uh details will be covered by the council intern David Pyle, who a few months ago took the reins on this to really bring it across the, the final resolution and pitch for the planning commission and council. I'll let you fill in the rest of the details.
Evening commissioners, like Hannah said, I'm David Pyle. I come from up in the council office. The amendment that's before you is the result of months of joint effort between our office, Hannah, Parks and Rec, the Citizen Sustainability Committee. Uh, for those of you who might not be familiar with B-City, um, it is an initiative that's sponsored by a nonprofit organization called Xerxes. Um, and it's designed to promote a healthy habitat for pollinators, not it's aimed primarily at bees. Uh, but it also benefits other pollinators, butterflies, hummingbirds, beetles, uh, et cetera. Um, Utah, the state of Utah is part of a region that's home to more bee species than any other place on the continent. And contrary to popular belief, not a single one of them lives in hives or makes honey. And the native pollinator species in this region share a symbiotic relationship with the native plants in this region. So when one is affected, the other is as well. Think there's my PowerPoint. Thank you. About eighty percent of all the flowering plants in our region are dependent upon these pollinators. So needless to say, they're very important to maintain the health of our environment. Uh, in the average garden, you can, you can find about twenty different species of these bees. And unfortunately, they're in decline right now due to uh population, or I'm sorry. Uh, environmental destruction, harmful pesticides, invasive plant species that are choking out their uh natural food sources. So the way that B-City is meant to help uh these pollinators is by increasing the availability of native plants that these pollinators feed on, uh, encouraging alternatives to pesticide use, uh cultivating healthy nesting areas and spreading education awareness about the need to take care of our uh native pollinators. Now, there are a few requirements and like Hannah said, most of these are being done by Parks and Rec already. And I won't bore you with all of the details, but we already have, I'm told, an integrated pest management plan. Uh, we already uh host educational events, so this would not be much. Aside from the reporting, this would not be much of an additional load uh for Parks and Rec, and we've already spoken with them and gained their support as well as that of the Citizen Sustainability Committee. In addition to these administrative requirements, we are required to pass an amendment to the general plan, which is why I'm here before you today. Um, and we are also required to pay a five hundred dollar annual membership fee. And then we initially received some pushback because of this requirement. Uh, but our solution was to make this donation based. And a couple of loops will be attending a meeting with the Provo Foundation to set up a donation portal. Um, and we're hoping that the fiscal impact uh of this uh initiative will be zero. And if I, I had to sneak in one pun as well, Provo can be the bee's knees. And that's all I've got for you, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you've got.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners?
Can you elaborate just a little bit more on the healthy nesting areas? What, how would you encourage that?
Yes, so most of the native bees in our region are ground nesting, meaning they burrow into the ground, not unlike a rabbit or some kind of rodent. Uh, the main enemy to this is the use of things like mulch, gravel, things that impede their access to the ground. Um, so the way to combat that is in, it's to simply minimize their use in public areas to keep uh sod grass in those areas that allow them access to the dirt.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now open this item to public comment. Are there any neighborhood or district chairs present this evening for this item? Not, not for this item, okay. Not for this item as well? Okay, we'll go ahead and open it to general public then. Each person will have two minutes to comment. Uh, please start stating your name and city of residence, and when your time is up, you will hear a ding and your microphone will be muted. Each person may come up to make one comment. If we have questions, we'll invite you forward at the end of public comment. Okay, not seeing any comments. Uh, we'll now close public comments and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Um, my only concern was the cost. Can't see any disadvantage to this if it helps the environment and doesn't cost anyone any money. And I liked that it says the city would continue to do all of these things with or without the designation. So it kind of seems like if donations are paying for the, the annual fee and it's something the city is doing anyway, may as well jump on board to help with bringing more information and interaction with the city. I don't have a problem with it. Basically, all we're saying is we're okay with adding the last two pages of our staff report, a few pages of our staff report to the um conservation and resiliency plan, which we recently passed, just to add this emphasis. And I don't see that having a negative effect at all.
Any other comments? Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I've never done one though before. Do I need to read the item one?
Just read item one and say, I move.
I move that Provo City Council Office, their request for an ordinance amendment to the conservation and resiliency plan to include a new appendix committing Provo to be a B-City USA affiliate, citywide application. Be.
And just to be clear, we're recommending approval, right?
Recommending approval.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll go ahead and start voting.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye, so the item passes unanimously. Go ahead to item two, Desert Edge Builders' Request Project Plan Approval to Construct a New Office Warehouse in the PIC Zone Located at six six three East Lakeview Parkway. Um, and Mary Barnes will be presenting this one.
Thank you so much. All right, uh, this is just a larger area map to kind of show where the exact property is. You can see the city golf course is just across the road to the south. Um, there's a self-storage facility to the north, and then farther north is the public works facilities as well. Um, so yeah, it's in a fairly industrial area already. Moving on, so the applicant is proposing to build a nine-unit um office warehouse product. With ninety-nine parking stalls have been provided as well as four ADA stalls. It meets, um, you know, all of those requirements. It has two short-term park, bike parking stalls and four long-term bike parking stalls, which also meet requirements. Um, this is just to show where, exactly where the accesses are. Uh, any delivery trucks, there's overhead doors um on the rear of the building. Um, any delivery trucks will probably and will be entering from Lakeview Parkway and cycle through to Industrial Parkway, and then they'll be able to use that light to get wherever else they need to go. So traffic circulation is great. Um, with the landscaping plan, they are, they, the entire site, so fifteen point five percent of the site is landscaped and it's um, it, it, it meets the landscaping standards completely, except for one part, which is the perimeter parking lot landscaping standards on the north end. Right now, there's a two-foot landscaping strip. I don't know what that sound was. I promise it wasn't me. Anyways, um, but the, the code requires a seven-foot landscaping. Strip. So, um, the rear yard of this project does border and it's kind of difficult to see in this. Um, it does border that existing self-storage facility property and that those property owners installed a ten-foot landscaping strip when the property was developed back in twenty eighteen. That um ten-foot strip has about twenty-five trees, no, it has twenty-five trees planted in it, planted in it every twenty feet on center. Um, so pretty much if the applicant was required to put in that seven-foot landscaping strip as well, they'd be required to do eleven trees and eighty-three shrubs based on our um calculations and the code. Um, with this plan, there'd be that, those twenty-five trees to complement this two-foot landscaping strip, which would have ninety-three shrubs. So it's more shrubs than what would be required, um, although there are no technically um, none of those trees, you know, on the perimeter of those parking spaces. Staff feels like this, this would be an adequate buffer, especially because um, all that the parking lots are facing is the back of the storage unit, and we feel that it's um, it's just an inadequate buffer. It really fulfills the intent of the zone um for of the landscaping standards there. Um, so there was a condition of approval added to the staff report that the rear perimeter parking lot landscaping requirement is altered to allow a two-foot landscaping strip. This is what the building would look like. It meets the standards of the zone. Um, that's just the floor plan. But in conclusion, we are in favor, staff is in favor of this project plan being approved. We, they meet all the CRC requirements, have gotten CRC approval. Um, I don't know if you've driven down there recently, but it doesn't look great. This is really going to create a better presence on the corridor, especially just across from the golf course, you know? And with all this landscaping, they have, you know, so many trees on the site. It's going to be something that's really pretty and really great. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Mary. Any questions for staff? Yes, yeah?
I'm assuming if we were required the extra seven feet, that would mean they had to lose one of the units, right?
It would, it would mean they'd have to shrink the entire building because that bite into the parking, parking has eighteen feet long, and then every drive aisle has to be at least twenty-four feet, and I already need that.
Oh, sorry, north is up on this, right?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, I see. Yeah.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, that's, that's a big, that's significant.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Of course.
The applicant present tonight? We'll invite you to come forward. You'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation. When your time is up, you'll hear a ding and the microphone will be muted. Uh, following your uh presentation, we'll ask questions if we have any.
Right, I, I definitely won't take fifteen minutes. Um, as Mary's presented, um, this project, we're really excited about, oh, sorry, should I? Yes, Greg, Greg Perry, owner and developer of the project. Uh, thank you. Uh, yes, we're really excited about this project. As Mary said, um, Lakeview Parkway, not, not a lot of great looking buildings along that route. There's, there's a lot of metal rusty old buildings. We're coming in with a product that looks, is, is going to be a cinder block building with a really nice facade. All of the overhead doors are hidden from the street view, so they'll be, um, you know, on the, on the back end of the building where they won't be seen at all. Uh, the end result, I think, will be aesthetically really uh a, a, a big improvement for that whole neighborhood. And as you know, the Lakeview Parkway um corridor there is, it's getting a lot more in the traffic. Um, and we think it's, this is going to be a huge improvement uh to the area and um that, the uh buffer that we, um, Mary talked about, because that would take away, you know, a significant portion of our building, it really is a small warehouse for us. This is not a very big one. We've, we've been able to make it pencil by trying to make it as efficient as possible. But if we were to have to shrink the uh building, it would really just kill the project because you, you just can't, you have to have a building of a certain size to get some economies of scale to make the project pencil. And we already have a lot of challenges building in this area because of the, uh, it's a landfill, a former landfill area. And the, the soil there is not very stable, so we have to put in helicopiers down in our foundation to ma- essentially make the structure be physically uh structurally sound enough. So that's adding already a huge cost, and part of the reason why a lot of development hasn't happened there, uh, if that kind of makes sense. But um, yeah, uh, I'm happy to take any of your questions.
Great. Any questions for the applicant?
Um, on the landscaping plan, it looks like each of those little bump outs into the parking area ha- also has trees in it. Is that correct?
Yes.
Cause that to me is maybe not the seven feet, but it's still going to be a nice.
It will be.
A nice addition there.
Yeah, thank you, Mary. That, that is a canopy plan that kind of shows.
Yeah, and then there's twice as many on the south side, the street side, so.
Right.
Okay, that's, seems lovely. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
We'll now open this item for public comment. Do we have any neighborhood or district chairs for this item tonight? Okay, so we'll open it to the general public. Each of you will have two minutes. Are you for this item? Yep, go ahead. Okay. Just acknowledging, awesome. Okay, so we'll open it to the general public. Each of you will have two minutes to comment. Um, when your time is ended, you'll hear a ding and your microphone will be muted. Okay, not seeing any comments. We will now close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Um, my biggest concern on this was anytime we're making it, asking for an exception to a rule, I want to make sure that it's legit. So I drove past there on my way tonight and feel like um the overhead pictures in the staff report really don't do the site justice because the trees don't have leaves on them right now. Sandy, could you show the, the picture that has the actual picture? I think it maybe is the zone map.
It's covered up right there.
Yeah, there's another one that actually showed it that was zoomed in on um Mary's presentation. Yeah, so you can see those little dots at the top are actually the trees, and they're quite large. They're probably twenty feet or more tall right now, so they're already fairly mature. When they'll have leaves on them, they'll be they'll be at an adequate buffer. So once I drove past and looked at it, I realized it was a significant space and I have not, absolutely no problem with it. It's also, that's probably eight foot, if not, is eight foot maybe the maximum height that the fence can be on the storage units. It's a significant height fence too, so it really does have a, a very immediate divide between the properties, and it's almost like the trees belong to the property on the south anyway. So I really don't feel like it's an exception. I feel like the staff made a good call there with giving them the two feet requirement so that the, the project will work. So I'm totally in favor of it. I think it'll be great. I won't get flat tires riding my bike there anymore because there won't be a field full of weeds and garbage everywhere. So I think it'll be a great improvement to the area.
Great. Any other comments? Okay, I have to say I agree, um, especially given the types of uses that are here, et cetera. That buffer seems completely sufficient for this area. I think the landscape design looks great. What's going to come in here is going to be nice.
We have to remember it's immediately across the street from the landfill, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's not like we're buffering it from a a highly decorative public area, so I think it's great that they want to come in and do something so nice there.
Can, can I move to make a motion?
Yes, please.
All right, I motion the Desert Edge Builders Request Project Plan Approval to construct a new office warehouse in the PIC Plant Industrial Commercial Zone located at six sixty-three East Lakeville View Parkway, East Bay Neighborhood. To approve.
To approve.
Approve the Request of Project Plan Application with the following conditions. The rear perimeter parking lot landscaping requirement is altered to allow a two-foot landscape strip and that a final subdivision plot is approved and recorded.
Excellent.
I'll second.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have a discussion on the motion?
I just want to clarify the names Desert Edge Builders in case that matters for the report of action.
Okay, let's go ahead and start voting.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
And although aye, so the item passes unanimously. Let's go ahead and I'm going to read items three and four in together. Uh, item three, Peggy Case Requests a Zone Map Amendment from the R one eight, one-family residential zone to the CG General Commercial Zone. Uh, in order to provide an event space in an existing accessory building located at two thousand eighty-seven West Center Street. As well as item four, Peggy Case Requests Concept Plan Approval for an Event Center in a Proposed CG General Commercial Zone located at twenty eighty-seven West Center Street, and Aaron Ardmore will present this to us.
Okay, thank you, Commission. Um, so start with the property location there. Uh, you'll see the area all highlighted in red uh for the property and in the zone and general. area all highlighted in red uh for the property and in the zone and general plan maps. Uh this applicant has been working through staff for a while, trying to find a way to uh get these uses as like they establish on the property. Uh you might recall there was a a text amendment to the agritourism overlay zone uh to reduce that to from five acres to one acre. And that was from this applicant uh going that direction um but has because of discussion and uh feedback from the city council and staff has has now changed course and is back in front of us today uh with this request to general commercial zone. Uh the the request is to establish this uh structure on the bottom picture uh as a an event center and event space. Uh there's there's a couple ways to do that. Um the commercial, general commercial zone seems to be the best way to get that done. Uh so the barn would be an event space, the the home there in the front along Center Street would be a short-term rental. Um so this would just be step one of this process for her. Uh these are conditional uses in the CG zone. Uh so further detail of the plan, parking, occupancy, ingress egress. All of that would be established through the conditional use permit. Um but she has to get the zone first. So that's why we're here tonight. Um staff is recommending approval on this. Um main reason why is you could see on the right there, the general plan calls for mixed use in this area. Uh you've you've seen the mixed-use zone come on the property to the east. Uh there's commercial zoning, as you can see from the the map in the middle. General commercial zoning all around this property. Uh that's that's the primary zone and it's on this uh intersection. Uh so we we felt like that was a good way to continue that mix of uses uh to provide some uses that aren't currently in that area. Um the home, the the scale of the home to stay there as a short-term rental, uh we feel like that respects that the character of the area as it transitions to residential to the west and south. Um and the conditional use, like I said, provides uh additional protections and oversight uh if there was any issues uh that conditional use, as you know, can be revoked. So so that's a helpful tool um on on top of all of this. Uh the one concern that you know, you may know in the staff report is the variety of the uses that allow that are allowed by right in the CG zone. Uh so staff is just bringing that to the attention of the commission, to the city council to have the discussion. See if there's some sort of limiting factors uh that we would want to put on this that we can request uh the applicant to to agree to uh if this moves forward. So so that's all I have. We are recommending approval of the the zone map amendment and the and the concept plan for the site.
Great, thank you. Any questions, yeah?
So if it changes to a commercial use and we say yes to that. But the con- the conditional things we put on it, like let's say, okay, you can do that and it has to be an event center and we make that conditional, right? And then that kind of goes sideways, right? Because for whatever reason, then what are they left with? Because we've already approved the you know what I'm saying?
So yeah, so.
You were mentioning that, now I'm asking what the fallout would be.
No, that's it's a great question. Um so if we if we limit it either through, sometimes those are done in development agreement, sometimes those are done as conditions in the CUP. There's different tools to to get that limit. Um but if we limit to those specific uses, I'm not used goes away. Uh then you're either looking at an applicant coming in to want to use that property for a commercial use, coming to amend that if it's a development, development agreement, amend that development agreement with the city council. So there's still that that oversight if there was a change uh to occur. Uh the short-term rentals uh same thing, uh that would that would be.
So the commercial use wouldn't go away?
The cur- the commercial zone wouldn't go.
Yeah, yeah.
But to do, if depending on how much we limit, we wa- ask it to be limited. Uh that could bring it back to the council if the use changed. Does that answer your question?
I I think so.
I have a question sort of with that. Um so there's a house and the house would also be turned into general commercial.
Right.
And then can somebody live in it still? I mean, like.
Yeah, so the the idea is a short-term rental. Short-term rentals are allowed and.
If it if it weren't it can't turn back into a regular home, is what I'm asking.
Right.
That's not short-term rentals.
Right, yeah, it 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 would lose any kind of nonconformity of a a single-family residential.
Any other questions? Lisa?
You can still live in a commercial zone in a regular, single-family home. Is that what you were saying that you couldn't? You couldn't have it be a regular, single-family home?
No, it would remain a single-family home. Maybe I misunderstood Arby's question.
The house, like, can you live, can say say it's, somebody wants to no longer use it for short-term rentals and they wanna live in it?
Oh, yeah. Okay, yes, yes, all of that.
That's still allowed. It's not like it's it's, I mean, it's maybe not ideal for somebody. Someone might not think that was ideal, but it's still allowed. They could go back and forth without any problem. Cause both are allowed by right.
Correct.
I was confusing. I don't I don't really like to see houses turned into businesses, cause it's like cute houses, but yeah.
So I'm curious, Erin, just following up on what you finished with there. When I read this report, that was my major concern. What happens if this goes sideways? Event center doesn't work. They wanna do another commercial zone activity that is given by right. You were mentioning there's ways to do to restrict that. Um what would that look like? How does that look?
Um if that was a concern of of the planning commission, they would recommend um that in some fashion, either with approval with conditions or recommendations or with a denial because of this concern. And then the city council can have that conversation with the applicant um stating you know, having that conversation of we wouldn't feel comfortable approving this rezone unless this was addressed.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, I have some questions for you, Mr. Ardmore. Is anything structurally changing on the property with this? I mean, I I understand right now we're talking about a zone change and then the potential for a concept plan approval. Eh if the concept plan approval were to be approved, are we talking about any structural changes on the property? It looks like they're just repurposing all the structures that are on the property.
Correct. The only the only changes that would be needed on the property would be improved access for parking and an improved parking lot.
Cause right now it's just a gravel driveway.
Right.
Okay, um how long has the current use been going on? One of the uh letters that we received from somebody said that there's a lot of noise from events going on back there. I don't know if that's a short-term rental situation back there or if it's already being used, but how long has that been going on?
So I've heard the same. Um I've had same phone calls.
Okay.
Uh according to the city, this is a single-family home with a accessory building. So that's that's all we have legally approved on the property currently.
Okay, so if in, if in fact, there's more formal events going on, they're either family events or they're illegal or something else. Okay.
Something else, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Now moving to item four real quick, the staff is actually recommending that this part be continued. Is that correct?
Yes, so so thank you for reminding me of that. The approving this concept plan, we felt would give a some some unclear direction uh to the applicant that she she can just move forward once the zone change is approved. Um because this requires a conditional use permit, that's where the true plan details like parking and parking lot landscaping and all those things would show up. Uh the con- concept plan you have in front of you uh doesn't give us the detail that that we would need to feel comfortable approving that. So that's why we asked that to be continued. Uh it'd be continued essentially indefinitely as a conditional use permit application and public hearing would replace the concept plan.
So the conditional use would replace it not be together then at a future meeting?
Right, the concept plan is a requirement with any rezone request according to city code. So that's why it it got kind of tied on to uh your agenda tonight. Um but it really uh would would be moot because of the conditional use permit.
Okay, excellent. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I have one more question. I'm trying um to grapple with the fact that there are there's a row of single-family homes immediately adjacent to this that would be affected by whatever decision we make. And I was wondering if you can give us a timeline of that accessory structure being, was it two thousand four? The variance for the height of the accessory structure?
Yes.
Um when was, when were the homes built? Which was their first, the accessory structure or the homes?
The applicant may know bedroom.
Okay, that's just a question I'm gonna throw out there for someone to answer at some point before we make a decision because to me, it matters what's on the ground and what's on a map before somebody makes a purchase of a property and so that kind of affects my interpretation of which way you would lean, so. Thank you.
Commissioner Self?
Yeah, this is kind of going back to a previous question, but I'm still just a little bit uh I I guess unclear on why we're seeing a recommendation for uh the zone change and if if we're seeing a recommendation from staff to continue the conditional use permit. And here's my thinking this.
The concept plan.
The concept plan, excuse me. Um if if the if the if we want this to be in the general commercial zone anyway, regardless, that makes sense. But this is all being driven by this specific uh concept plan that we're looking at. So that's that's the I guess I'm just trying to understand why we would, why the recommendation at all at this at this point.
Um to be to be blunt, the concept plan in this case doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Um it's it's a requirement to have a concept plan application with a rezone and that's why it's here.
Uh.
It's a code requirement. Um because we are wanting this to be so limited, uh if we wanna recommend approval, uh that would lead us to the conditional use permit, being that that approval action. Um does that make sense?
Yeah, that does. Okay.
Okay, any other questions from Miss Cardmore? Okay, thank you very much. We'll now invite the applicant to come forward. Thank you. As you're coming forward, you'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation. Um following your presentation, we'll ask any questions.
Hey, I'm Peggy Case. I'm from Mapleton. This is
David Simpson. Springo.
Springo.
So I bought the property about three years ago. Um just because I had it listed for sale and I fell in love with it and sold it to myself. So um I've just been trying to figure out what to do with the property and I have used it personally with family weddings, birthday parties, baby showers, friends ninetieth birthdays. So we have had people there up to about seventy cars at a time. Um we typically try with like my nephew's wedding, we told him they had to be out by nine thirty. So we try to do everything we can do to keep the noise down because we are aware of the neighbors. Um we have added a parking, a gate at the back that opens up into one thirty west, so you can have a good flow of
Thirty south.
South, excuse me, a good flow of traffic. Do you wanna say anything? Um so I just have, since I've been having friends and family use it, I feel like people have called me and said, hey, we saw that your nephew had his wedding there. Could we have ours there? And that's when I came to the city and said, what do I do if I want to let people have it there to become legal? So that's when this started about a year and a half ago. I've never done this before, so I may have made some mistakes in the beginning and that's why we've had to make some changes, but um I I ha- I am a real estate agent in the area and I rent places like this to have classes for past clients, like wreath making classes, cooking classes to do for our clients on special events. And I would like to be able to use this legally for that. Um I feel like it's in a really good spot with the rapidly growing airport. There's really not any accommodations for people staying at the airport. I've actually had friends that have come in and they said, could we park our car at your facility? While we travel home or travel where they're going and they come back and get their car from my place. So it's very, very convenient for the airport if someone wanted to stay at a really nice Airbnb. Um I do have a staging company and I have a storage facility there that I store all the furniture. Um so it's a really amazing property. The yard is what is used most of the time for events outside, weddings, babe, everything is done outside, so it's a limited time of year. Um anything inside would be the classes. And other than that, um oh, we should be in charge of this.
Yeah.
Cause I don't know how to do it. Do you have anything else you wanna add?
No, uh uh well, other than we, we actually made up a flyer that we uh gave to the council last meeting and made that up and took it around to the neighbors on the the west side.
It was
Just to
This.
Let them know what we were doing.
Oh, just the arrow. Sorry.
Oh.
So minimal minimal neighborhood impact. We feel like it's a good buffer zone from what the property to the east is going to be. We're kind of an island unto itself. We don't fit into residential and we don't fit into commercial or multi-use, what they're gonna do on the corner. So I feel like ours would buffer the neighborhood from what that's coming. Um we do have the traffic and parking on site, so it wouldn't congest the streets. I feel like again, the community benefit and preserving green space. When it was up for sale, we had people that wanted to come in and take all the green space out, which is phenomenal. And um use it as parking. And that's when I just thought, I can't let this place go to parking lot. Um this is the concept plan and everything is existing, Lisa, in your question. There will be no structural changes. So this was my idea. This is, I saw these pictures of community gatherings. And I would like to have something for the community similar to farm-to-table. Have a chef come and prepare meal and have people come in and sit at my table type event. And this is what gave me the idea. This is the driveway coming in from the front house going south. And this is the lawn area. We added a pavilion there with a fire pit. I added the concrete patio just so that we would have a place to gather and have
Set up tables?
Yeah, set up tables. Most people we like the food on the grass. So you can see these are family. This is my niece's baby shower. My nephew's wedding. And it really isn't anything for micro weddings in the area. And this is a really good space because it limits the size of the event because the parking only holds about sixty cars. I think that's it.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. Any questions for the applicant? From the commission? Yes.
This sounds awesome. My questions are how do you plan to restrict the number of guests so that you don't rent it out to somebody and then they invite three hundred people? How does that work logistically?
I don't have a property manager, so I would, anybody that would use it would go through me. And I'm very picky about the property and I, we've limited it to a hundred people.
Okay.
We won't allow alcohol. I won't allow alcohol on the premises.
Okay.
So that's something I'm, is my standard.
And then you also said that you typically have had a time restriction on them?
Yes.
So they would be out.
They have to be out and cleaned up by nine thirty.
Okay. Excellent, thank you.
To follow up on that with city staff, is there any sort of fire code, et cetera, that would limit the number of people allowed on this property?
So if it becomes a commercial event center, uh there would be fire occupancy codes based on the square footage and the egress from the building.
Do you have any idea ballpark where that would be?
I don't. Uh that that would come later.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now open this item to public comment. Do we have any district or neighborhood chairs here to comment on this one? Okay, before we go ahead and open this to general public, I do wanna acknowledge uh that we have received one letter uh that we have all read on this topic from Jeffrey Miller, so that is in the record. So So, uh, we'll now invite the public to come up and make their comments. You'll have two minutes to make your comment. Please start with your name and city of residence. Um, and please note that the microphone will be muted at the end of your two minutes.
Hi there, I'm Jeffrey Miller again. I wrote to the letter, so this might be redundant. So my backyard is 30 foot from Peggy and Richard's property, just north of the concrete pad. See all in mouth. So this may seem redundant, so the traffic and its associated noise has increased substantially since the high school and the airport was constructed. The single property plans, sorry, are actually louder. Oh, the single propeller planes are actually louder than the jets. So, so this is just ramping things up. So that's in my neighborhood. I know this doesn't directly relate to the matter at hand, but it's an cumulative effect. I would ask the council to consider how they would feel about having 20 or so dump trucks and tractor trailers revving, idling, brake braking and pounding on their beds, trying to dislodge unwanted stuff inside of it at all hours of the day and night, 105 feet from your back door. I've been told that they have a non-conforming permit that allows them to do so. And if they are violating the noise ordinance to call the police, which I have and was told, what do you want me to do about it? They're working. And now you are considering moving even more noise to 30 foot from my back door for whoever will put money in Richard and Peggy's pocket. I have endured the previous events of P A systems, light bans and mass quantities of people, and I have to respectfully ask you to vote no on this request.
Okay. Thank you so much for your comment. Any other comments from the public this evening? Okay, not seeing any, we'll go ahead and go ahead, Erin. Apparently your time's up.
I need, I need to relate a public comment that I received by phone call. Uh, they, I told him I'd, I'd let him know. Uh, so the manager of Family Dollar did express some concern, um, that, that to make sure that there's enough parking for the events if it's approved. Um, so they don't feel like they can go across the street, park in Family Dollar parking lot and then go to the event. So he just wanted me to read that in.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Melissa?
I have a few questions. Do we find out if the homes were there first or the building was there first?
We checked the county records. It looked like they were built in the early 1980s.
The homes.
Dumps.
Okay. Um, the second thing is, Mr. Ardmore, what is the ultimate use potential for this zone if, if we change the zone? What are the possibilities? Can you give us a list?
Possibilities?
Yeah.
I could, I can give you a long list. Um, all sorts of retail. Let me, let me go to that.
I've got it here.
You've got it there. There it is. I've got it. All right. Uh, so residential facilities for elderly persons or persons with disability, commercial printing, um, travel agencies, a variety of retail hardware stores, um, automobile repair, eating places, restaurants, drugstores, uh, garden supply stores, personal services, athletic clubs, professional services, educational services. So you get the idea that it's a very wide open commercial zone.
Okay. Can I ask, and I know that you asked this already, but I still don't quite understand. Is there a reason why? Because if we like the concept of what's there and they're not intending to change anything structurally that's there, and it is a nice buffer between the two zones, why not just continue a conditional use permit for them?
In the residential R1 zone they're, they're in, uh, it's not, it's not permitted by condition or by right.
Not even by condition?
Right. So there's, there's limited zones that allow event centers, uh, either by permitted use or conditional use. Uh, the agritourism one was one approach, uh, but there's no agricultural use on the property. Uh, so, so that one didn't work. Uh, general commercial is one of the other ones, um, that allows it by conditional use, which we thought was safer anyway. Um, so that's where she was directed to, to go.
And so if we have concerns about what else could happen, there, you, you feel comfortable that there's a way to limit this to?
We, yeah, we share those concerns. We wouldn't be comfortable with just a, a straight rezon to general commercial without some sort of limitation to, to the use of it's allowed.
So I want to jump in. So what if this property got sold?
Again, so if the property was sold and they don't want to use it as an event space in short-term rental?
But they have a, but they now have the commercial.
But they have the zone, but it's limited by a development grant, let's say. They have to go back to the city council.
All right. So the development agreement is forever and ever.
Yeah.
Transfers.
Yeah.
And if they decided they wanted to build a bigger event center, they could do that.
Uh, unless it was, uh, bound by a condition put on through the conditional use permit, which I imagine that would be a pretty typical standard to put.
Okay. So we'd have two levels of protection. Is that right? A limitation with a development agreement?
Yeah.
Plus a conditional use limitation?
That's what Steph would recommend.
Has a development agreement been proffered? Is that something we can even talk about what it might look like? Or are we just saying we probably can't approve this unless there's some
Some sort of limitation.
Some sort of limitation and that will be up to the city council to make happen.
I think for us, we just leave that open-ended saying, here's the concerns we want.
Okay.
Addressed.
Yep.
All right. I actually, are we kind of in the discussion? We're in the discussion phase, right?
Discussion phase.
I actually think that this, at first I thought this wasn't going to be a good buffer, but I actually think the thoughtful nature of the proposal and the size limitations of the events make this a better buffer than I originally thought it would be. Um, I have neighbors that make noise later into the night than this could potentially do. It still isn't ideal, but it's better than the semis parked in the property to the east.
Yeah, but it's already a house. Like, do you know what I mean? People built their houses there in the eighties. They don't need a buffer. They already had one. It's called a single-family residence.
Yeah, but
Do you know what I mean?
Who buffers the single-family residence?
It was always there, but how long is that, um, place next door, the commercial place next door been there? You know what I mean? That one has already been settled. That's not our,
Yeah.
That's not our fight. Our fight is the next one, which is you're saying, well, it's a good buffer. I'm like, they already have a buffer. So what you're doing is making a less effective buffer.
Also a bigger property, so it's not an 8,000 square foot lot with a single-family house on it. It's how many is it? Does it even say?
Right, but you see, you see that, I, I'm not disagreeing. I like the project. I just think, wow, if I had a house with this as the backyard, I don't feel like extending its use makes it a better buffer. It makes it uh, more tenu-, it's more tenuous. This is a problem. Like now it's in flux. It can become a retail establishment. And so you bought a house, you have a backyard and then all of a sudden like it's now in jeopardy, it becoming something else. So I don't think this is a win for the neighbors to the west in any way, if we change it. Do you know what I'm saying?
I, yeah, I see exactly what you're saying.
So, so what we're doing is deciding if these people get more commercial property closer to their backyard. And, and that's where I'm like, ooh. Know what I'm saying?
I'm comfortable with the limitations that the conditional use permit could allow, like yes, we're calling it commercial on a map, but uh, if there were a development agreement and it, and the conditional use permit process went or gone through, we could really narrow this down with a whole bunch of paperwork that would lock it in place so that it wouldn't be more intense. But the question is, would we be comfortable with the intensity of the event size that's being offered, which it sounds like you're not.
Well, no, I don't know that I am, but I'm just thinking about the welfare of the people who've made a huge life investment right next door.
I agree. I do like, here's some of the things I like. I like that it opens onto 130 South so that it's not just a big, long driveway that they all have to turn around and go in and out the same. I like that. And, um, I like the thoughtful nature of the the vision of this. But so the, the question is, where does that, if the general plan says this is what we've visualized for this part of the city and the, and the zoning ordinance says this is what we've visualized for the city. And the people who have overtaken our microphone don't agree.
Spirits are speaking.
But, you know, I feel like, do we trust the general plan and zone to say this is a line? Or do we say the lines maybe needs to be fudged a little bit and leave it, leave it be like you're suggesting?
I don't know that I'm suggesting that. I'm asking for an argument back and forth because I, I'm like playing devil's advocate here. Like you said, this is a really nice, this is the nicest version of a commercial property that those neighbors to the west could ask for. However,
Right.
it does open up the possibility, it's now commercial. You know, it's one step closer. And that's why I'm like, hmm.
So here, here's an argument for you. Um, this is on Center Street in an area that we've already got in our general plan to be a commercial area. And it wouldn't take much in the five or 10 years for, uh, future for us to see that start to spread. It's on Center Street, headed out to the airport. This is an area that's going to continue to grow. Uh, the size and shape of the parcel makes it really difficult to do much with that from a commercial standpoint. So this is the best case scenario, maybe. Uh, it might also be one of the few only case scenarios where you could, we could make that work. If I was a neighbor to the west, I think I would want to see investment into this kind of building using the neighborhood argument. I would want to see that kind of investment into a place like this to kind of lock it in, so to speak, because in five years, 10 years, if it wasn't, that's an area that is likely to be developed into something else.
So your argument is it's going anyway. So we might as well pick this one.
If, if I was a neighbor, that's what I would say. I, I think that's why I, I would put my money on that saying, hey, this is a really great kind of neighbor for us because look at where we are on Center Street, across from the Family Dollar, just down from the gas station in an area that's going to continue to get developed.
So on our neighborhood general plan, can all of these people who own single-family properties sell their property and would, do you know what I'm saying? Like these houses can say, oh, I'm going to be a salon now or
No.
No, our general plan wants them to stay houses. But it's totally happy with them having semi-trucks in their backyard.
Correct.
Well, the semi-trucks are because of
Delivery.
History, right?
It's Well, no, no, no. I'm talking about the, the new property we're speaking about right now. Yes, there are semi-trucks one to the east. I'm talking about this one. We're bringing the semi-trucks closer, as the gentleman said, from 101 feet to 30 feet.
No, there won't be any semi-trucks.
No, no, sorry. In, sorry, my logic may have jumped. You're saying this is going to happen anyway. This is inevitable that this property will be developed into a commercial property at some point.
I don't think she's going to have, uh, semis coming through. Is that?
No, never.
Okay, sorry. It was really unclear to me. I'm sorry. I was, okay.
If we're saying that this is going to become all commercial anyway, then we're bringing the semi-trucks closer.
Yes, it was a hypothetical in the future. What are we opening these people up to?
Right, that's right. Because it's on the general plan that way.
Right.
Right.
I feel like we're kind of being given the opportunity to say there isn't a middle zone that creates a buffer. So let's create one with restrictions that are on a property as a development is suggested, so that we're sort of creating a, a half commercial zone here by the restrictions that can be associated with this request.
So for me, then the key is what are those restrictions? What restrictions would you need to see?
And then we can pass that along to the city council and say, we want to deny this because we're worried about the, the buffer that could disappear for these neighbors if something intense goes in here. And therefore we would only be okay with this if this happened and we can give them a list of things that would turn our denial into an approval.
Right.
But that would be in their hands. Is what I'm, I'm, I'm thinking we're all sort of feeling the same concern about what could happen. So let's make a list of, this is what we, we like about this project, but we would deny the zone change request because of what the can of worms it could open up. Unless this, 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 and this were met, we would deny it.
But I think with item four, because a conditional use permit would be required if the zone change is approved, then we are still, we're signaling that we, we like something like this to happen by approving that, but, but it doesn't actually change anything because we still have to see that conditional use permit.
Right.
Or anything.
Which is like subsection two of our half zone. Like then it allows us to like cinch up the belt even tighter and say, okay, thank you for saying you were only going to do this. And now these are the, the parameters of this project you're presenting. And if you don't meet those parameters, then your neighbors can call the city and say they're not meeting the parameters of the conditional use permit.
Yep.
And then they can't have anything there. So it gives the property owner a great incentive to do everything they said they would do so that that permit doesn't get revoked. Like we had a few months ago with another one that had been, that wasn't meeting its criteria.
But we do agree, we're kind of sticking it to the neighbors of the west, right? Like we're all going to admit that.
If we decide to change the zone, yeah.
If we did it, especially without any, any
But even if we do, with many, many provisions, we're still like, you know what I'm saying?
The use will be slightly more intense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Current.
Yeah.
But I think the key here is to recognize that given the law, its position, what the future plan says for it, we're really asking them to give a little now to protect them from giving more later. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I
I mean, the other argument, the other argument could be
Does that make sense to the neighbors?
The other argument could be that they were there first and they thought it was always going to be a single-family home because it was a single-family home and why are we changing it? So like, that's the other side of that argument.
And I do see that there's a Family Dollar across the street and there's, I don't know what the business is just to the west, but
It's a restaurant.
The east, sorry, it's, it's a restaurant.
Well, so across the street, there's Family Dollar. West is, uh, a restaurant. East is blank. It's
Right. So I guess I'm saying it was already very commercial in nature.
And a state of, um, Center Street is like a, like a truck road, right? Is that? I remember somebody saying that, yes, a truck route for
Center Street's not happy about it, the residents there, because I was here last night, we talked about it.
But anyway, that's Okay, but I'm saying it's a state road and we, I, I've already talked about this as well. It's a main road. We don't have authority to change that, so we have to kind of go with it.
Uh, yes and no. Um, east of 2050 West, uh, Center Street is a state road. West of 2050 West slash Geneva, it is City Road. It's designated by the city as an arterial road, so there are some designations there, but it's, it's only state east of
Okay, so just barely.
Just barely.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so I think it comes back to essentially the, the city legal staff has instructed us, the best way to do this is to say, we recommend denial unless, right? So what are those unless items? What would make it comfortable for you guys?
Um, I just have another clarifying question that I'm counting these parking spots and it only looks like there's 35 of them. So do I remember incorrectly that there were more than that?
Erin, do you want to fix that?
Um, so, so that's one of the details that I was living to that we don't have something that we'd be comfortable with, that those numbers would come out in the conditional use permit. Essentially on a use like that, it's one stall per four persons to the maximum occupancy of the structure.
Okay.
And that's how we'll view that once we get to that level.
So it may even be that if this moved forward, they would only be allowed to use it for those daytime cooking classes and craft classes because there's not adequate parking for the other suggestions.
We've had some of these where the parking, uh, the, the amount of parking has restricted it more than the fire code has for occupancy.
Or they rent some parking from the people next door, right?
That would be difficult to do in this case.
Not our, not our concern, I guess, but
Yeah.
They have to meet the requirements for parking if this were to go forward and they have to provide the parking to get the conditional use permit. So that's its own like shield.
So limitations I think of would be hours of operation kinds of questions, right? Make sure it's not going too late in the night. Some sort of sound limit. They mentioned one in their own presentation. I think that would be good. That, that, yeah, the maximum decibels of sound. Um,
The number of guests definitely would need to be addressed.
Yeah.
So a restriction on the number of guests or restriction on the time for the events, a restriction on the sound level.
I'm noting these down so we can
I, I don't even know if it would be out of line to say, um, make a list of class types and party types that would class types and party types that would be permissible. I would, um, the owner mentioned Miss Case mentioned, um, no alcohol. I thought that would be a good thing to, to note.
I like that one. Get it in writing.
Since it's adjacent to a neighborhood, maybe some of the restrictions on like adjacency to a, a school, how, you know, there's certain businesses you can't have. Maybe the code would automatically preclude those, but that would be good to have in writing as well.
So I have a number of guests, sound time, no alcohol.
So these are all conditional use restrictions?
No, we were just saying like things for the city council to, um, consider before denying or approving the zone request.
So wouldn't that be CG uses?
Yeah.
Like we would say, the only thing we'd like to see here is this structure.
Limited to existing structures.
Yeah, you're right. Ms. Kendall's right because you prob, we probably would have to regulate the other ones with a conditional use permit application. But as far as a zone change restriction, maybe they could only legally restrict the permitted uses.
At least in my mind, I think the, the nice thing is we can just list our concerns and if they get addressed through a conditional use permit process or as a development agreement, as the part of the zone change, whichever way I'm fine with, right? As long as it's addressed.
So we'd have to agree that we're denying it because we're not comfortable with any of those other listed uses. Commercial, um, like anything else, right? Pharmacy or gas station or car repair or any of the other lists.
We're basically saying we're only comfortable with this looking as much like a single family home and acting as much like a single family home as possible, but still allowing this little bit of step up to have, uh, make it a decent buffer between both.
Yeah, I think, uh, the nice thing is it's a recommendation to the city council, right? So if we just say we're recommending denial based on these, the applicant can then go work those out in a combination of a conditional use as well as a development agreement or whatever means they choose to do that point and it's up to them.
I'm still wondering about the, the notion though of, of continuing item four and allowing staff to have time to do that with the applicant. Like why, why are we trying to? Uh, I, I'm trying to see what the, I, I don't know, is that maybe it's a question for staff? Is there a preference here on, on the way that we're looking at this?
I think, uh, let me, uh, you're probably going to answer it better, but I just feel like in previous, um, times when we had a concept plan with a zone change request, it was because it was trying to persuade us that the general plan and, and zoning maps were maybe not perfect for it. And it was trying to give us reason to change it, whereas the zoning map and general planner are already giving us significant reason to align with them. And so the concept plan in this case doesn't bother me as much that and the fact that we can pull in the reins with the conditional use permit that would be required.
Yeah, I, I don't think approving the concept plan does anything different than continuing the concept plan. So whatever you're comfortable with doing, uh, what are, I think.
I'm talking about the zone, the zone change. Approving, your recommendation is, the staff's recommendation is to approve the, the, the zone change and then continue the, uh, item four, right?
Yeah, the concept plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that's why I was saying, it, it probably doesn't matter if you approve the concept plan or continue the concept plan. Um, I think either way is the same result. The reason staff has to go to council and they would still have to come back for a condition use permit.
Should we do a straw poll? I was just wondering, because he said, I mean, you know, you're talking about approving it, but I think we talked about denying, recommending denial. And then listing the concerns, is that what we're all?
Yeah, because we've been trained that it is our purview to in, to interpret the ordinance.
Okay, I agree with that.
Our purview to change the ordinance, it's our purview to say we've reviewed it and we think this is what the intent was and we agree or disagree with that. And I think most of us are saying, we get why the maps are the way they are. We get that somebody has to be the buffer. But we're not comfortable with it being a dramatic change because those neighbors were there first. I mean, this house was also there, probably before the neighbors built their houses in all honesty. But this, this suggested use is a new thing. So we're saying, are we comfortable with creating this? Is trying to be forward thinking about the potential of what could come here and giving us our feet in the gr, on the ground of let's stop it before it is a runaway train. And this is what we'd like to see happen.
We've also been trained that approving or recommending approval would basically be saying, we're okay with any permitted use in this area under that zone. So legally carries more weight and is stronger if we recommend denial unless certain things are addressed.
And then it's up to the city council to, to use that wiggle room as they see fit.
That sounds good to me. So we're recommending denial unless.
Unless, number of guests, sound, time of operation, alcohol use, uh, the existing structures and uses are formalized.
Use your mic.
But I hate using this. I just don't want to be.
And, and Melissa would like to, and I actually, I think Melissa's is actually the most important. No other, we're not comfortable with any other use besides this one that's being requested. And I don't know how the legal department will need to address that if somebody were to proffer such an agreement, but that's what we're basically, that's the message we would like to send is we're only comfortable with this if this is the use. So make sure that's, I feel like I agree with Ms. Kendall, that's a very important restriction is that we're not comfortable with these other potential uses of a commercial zone.
Okay, are we ready for a motion that would formalize that list?
I can do that.
Okay.
Okay. I, um, would like to make a motion that we forward a negative recommendation to the municipal council. So in other words, we're going to recommend that they deny the request for a zone map amendment for item number three for R one eight, one family residential zone to the general commercial zone in order to provide an event space in an existing accessory building located at twenty eighty seven West Center Street in Provo Bay neighborhood. With, um, the reasoning that we aren't comfortable with the zone change requests unless certain concerns of ours were met. And those concerns include.
Can you read my writing? It's pretty bad.
The number of guests being limited, the sound having a limit on it, the, um, time being limited, no alcohol being served, and limiting the use. Can you restate that for me?
Uh, limiting to existing structures and limiting the use to this use.
Okay, so the last two were limiting to existing structures and limiting it to just this use that's allowed in a commercial, general commercial zone with a conditional use permit.
Hey, do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on that motion?
Do we? I feel like we're overlooking some of the advantages of what this is bringing. And so I'm a little concerned about sending a heavy-handed signal to the council like, hey, unless it's this, absolutely not, because I think there's a lot of potential things. Again, I think the, the property itself limits largely what could be done there. But I think there's a lot of really positive things that could be done in that area to benefit that neighborhood. So I just, I guess that's just, just a concern I have more than anything is that we're.
Can you, uh, list some of those examples of other things you can think?
Well, I mean, let's, uh, let's, let's say that, um, I, I know that the property to the west is, or the east rather, is already sold and we've seen that one, but what if, if that was a mixed use and that was up for sale and that was combined? And we had a bunch of those other uses, the other uses that we'd hope to see in that mixed use area. If those spread in there and opened up and serviced that area, I think it would make a lot nicer, cleaner, uh, uh, you know, communities, uh, commercial section for that, that neighborhood.
Wait, you're saying that if these people bought out these people?
Yeah.
But we're not limiting, they can come back to the council at that point, so.
Yeah, I think all we're saying is they would have to come and amend that.
Absolutely. Yeah, they totally would. I'm just saying I'm a little concerned that we're just, we're that we, uh, as a commissioner, sending a pretty heavy-handed message to the neighborhood, to the property owner and to the council that it's this or nothing. That's, that's my concern.
What if we asked staff in the report to specifically notice that, uh, note in the report to the city council that there are other uses that we think would be good, especially in combination with the mixed use proposal to the east? We're just saying that should be done through an amendment process.
And maybe emphasize that we do, I mean.
Every one of us loves this idea. We just worry about it.
We worry about.
Going at it, yes.
The sprawl of the use.
Yeah, so when you said there.
When you said there may be other uses, I'm like, I don't know what they are. The, the sky's the limit, but we're here on this use. So I, I don't have a problem with the heavy-handed message today.
Because I don't think, I don't, I hope that the, that the city council and the, and the applicant and the staff recognize that we all really like this. We're just trying to.
We just care about the neighbors.
The, the tools that we have within the code to create a protective use.
Right.
So that everybody wins, so that everybody wins.
So that, yes, uh, so that there's a protection for the neighbors as well, mainly.
But again, we, if we like, we can make sure that gets noted in the staff report and they send those to us so we can check and make sure that that gets passed along.
So Mr. South, I mean, do, do we feel like we need to amend the motion based on this feedback? Or does that just add to the feedback and give more for staff to pass along? How does that work? We just had a lot of discussions, so advise us.
Happy to cover all of that in the report of action, which you'll review and sign and will be sent to the city council as part of their packet.
Okay, so do we vote next or did that motion work?
It still stands, I think.
Still stands, I think. So we can take a vote on it.
You want to restate it so we're not.
Who seconded the motion? Who seconded the motion? Barbie, thank you.
Okay, so just to, to make sure everybody's on the same one, we're recommending denial unless the number of guests is limited, the sound limits are, uh, recorded, uh, time of operation is limited to reasonable hours. That, uh, the commitment for no alcohol is, is put into writing and that it's limited to existing structures and the proposed uses here. Again, noted that in the report, it will, it will mention that it's not that we don't see other uses, we just don't know what they are right now. And so we want to see that, that limited. So with that, we'll start with our voting, uh, with Barbie.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye. So item three passes unanimously. Um, let's go ahead and make a motion for item four then.
I'm happy to do that one as well.
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion for item four, Peggy Case requests concept plan approval for an event center in a proposed general commercial zone located at twenty eighty seven West Center Street in the Provo Bay neighborhood that we continue this item for staff to work with the applicant further.
On a conditional use permit.
Yeah, but I don't know if I need to say that.
Okay. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion on this motion? Okay, start the voting.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye. So item four passes unanimously. Let's go ahead to item five.
We have a break.
Okay, we have a request for a break, so we'll take a five-minute break. We'll return at seven twenty, well, let's make it a seven-minute break, twenty-five, seven twenty-five.
So members of the commission, um, just to clarify, um, I don't have any problem with anything that you just deliberated on or did. But just to clarify, when an applicant stands up and says, I don't allow alcohol, I cut my hours off at nine o'clock or nine thirty. Hmm.
Is it working now? Okay. We'll go ahead and reconvene our meeting at this time uh with items five and six, which I'll read in together. Uh item five, Jeff Rans requests a zone map amendment from the R one point eight, one family residential zone to the L D R low density residential zone in order to create one new single family residential lot located at one thousand and one East Cedar Avenue in the Wasatch neighborhood. And item six, Jeff Rans requests concept plan approval for a two lot residential subdivision to create one additional single family home in a proposed L D R low density residential zone located at one thousand one East Cedar Avenue in the Wasatch neighborhood. And Erin Armore will present to this item for us.
Okay, thank you again. So here is the area up in uh Tree Street. You can see the property on the corner has an existing home on it. Uh existing single family home. Large backyard, uh the the property owner oh has owned this home since twenty twenty one. Uh he's looking to to subdivide the yard backyard off of this property to provide for one additional uh building lot. Uh you can see the zone and general map are are pretty consistent, yellow means residential. Um so that all complies. Uh the the proposed use, like I said, is is to create a single family lot. The reason for the rezone, uh the R one eight zone that's currently in uh has a minimum of eight thousand square foot lot. Uh the L D R zone for a single family detached product has a four thousand square foot minimum. Uh so he's able to get that four thousand square feet with this uh proposed concept here in front of you. Um adding a single family dwelling to a single family neighborhood, uh staff thought that's a good idea. It's a good infill site. Um we received a lot of comments on this proposal a- as you've read through them. Um I want to try to address some of those through through this presentation. Uh there was comments about uh concern over setbacks and buildable area. Uh the new lot would have the exact same setbacks as the R one eight zone has, ten foot side yards, twenty foot rear yard, uh twenty foot front yard as well. So so yes, it's a it's a smaller building area because of the smaller lot and the same setbacks. Uh but it it's not going to get any closer to any property uh or anybody's home than than a home could in our one eight zone. Uh so I wanted to to clarify that. Um honestly, there's a lot of concerns kind of about the maintenance of the property. Uh that's not really what we're looking at tonight. We're 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 looking at a a zone change request to be able to subdivide the property. Uh I understand uh property not being maintained uh can be frustrating. Um ownership changes hands. Uh maintenance goes up and down, things things happen. Um there were some comments made about uh this is a family neighborhood uh that you receive. This is a family neighborhood. We want to protect a family neighborhood. Staff is confused by that. We don't see how putting another single family home takes away from the family neighborhood. Um I I take exception to the fact that uh a renter would not be part of a family neighborhood. I think whether you're a renter or owner, you're you're a person in the neighborhood. Um and diversity is great. Uh so so I don't think those are really concerns that staff share. Um those were the majority of the concerns that you received. Um the the general plan calls for infill development, calls for a variety of lot sizes, a variety of housing products, uh different price points. These are all goals of the general plan. And that's why staff is recommending approval on this zone change and concept plan. See if there's anything else I want to add. No, I believe that's it. Do you have any questions for me?
Hey, thank you, Erin. Any questions for staff?
I think you already answered this, so I apologize. But basically, it has all the setbacks that it needs and it has the frontage it needs. So there's no variances being asked for.
There would be no variances given. Um if if the council approves this zone change, a subdivision plot would have to come in next. Uh the subdivision would get recorded at county, the the building permit would come in next. If someone wanted to build on this was requesting a variance, it would be a self imposed.
It'd be something else. So basically.
So we can't give that.
This lot conforms to what it should conform to.
It would.
I thought there was one variance for fifteen feet on the existing house.
That's so that's not a variance, that's a an exception given to the department director in the code. Um so he can in the L D R zone, M D R zone, H D R zone, uh our development services director can adjust setbacks. He's doing, he would do that on the off the existing home, not the new home. Uh so you could see there in the drawing, uh the fifteen to seventeen, that's indicating the the distance from the back of the house to the rear lot line, uh which is standard twenty feet. Uh in this case, he was okay with bringing that down to fifteen feet if it is able to create another home for somebody in the city.
What's that?
Can I ask, was this originally two lots? Some in this area, sometimes there there were two lots that somebody just made one parcel.
The subdivision records I've seen uh have had that as one lot, so.
It's never been two.
Not to my understanding.
Any other questions for staff? Yeah.
Okay.
Are there any other areas in this neighborhood that are zoned, the L D R?
I don't believe so. I believe this would be the first. There's a variety of lot sizes, but it's all R one eight, even though it's can provide a good variety of lot sizes in that zone.
Okay, and um have we made anys? Um has anybody asked when we've done some infill? We have had some infill. Have we made any zone changes for those infills?
We have. Um there's there's been a a number of them in the Pioneer neighborhoods uh going to V L D R, L D R to be able to subdivide deep backyards into flag lots or standard lots of corner. Um so this isn't uncommon. Uh people are finding these opportunities.
But not in this area, nothing in this area has been.
Nothing in this area I've seen have have used that strategy.
So all the infill that's occurred here has occurred within the zone?
Correct.
Any other questions? I have one question on the concept plan. I feel like in the past, when people have been trying to divide a lot to create some infill, they've given us some indication in the concept plan what that might look like as far as area of the lot filled and what the unit might look like. And I don't see that here. It's just saying here's where the lot would be, right?
Yeah, I mean typically you see uh layouts, site plans, floor plans, elevations for for townhomes or multifamily. Single family development, we we don't ask for that. It's it's a single family home. We we aren't really concerned with the floor plan and elevations to look like, uh nor does the state allow us to be concerned about those things.
Right, okay. Any other questions?
I'm sorry if I'm making you reiterate. So the zone change is going to allow this lot to be smaller, right? Then the lots around it. By how much? By point?
By four thousand square feet difference.
Roughly half, correct?
Rough roughly half. So the the current minimum is eight thousand square foot lot. This would allow a four thousand square foot lot.
And is that what the lot would be? What would be the two lots on this particular property?
Yeah, yeah, the new lot would be uh almost exactly four thousand square feet.
But it would still have the same setback as the neighbors do from.
Yeah, so it'd just be a smaller home.
Yeah, got it.
Okay, thank you very much. Is the applicant here this evening? We'll go ahead and invite you to come up. You will have fifteen minutes for your presentation. Please start by stating your name for the record.
Uh my name is Jeff Rans and I I live in Provo with my wife. Um thank you to the commissioners and to Erin for hearing this case and and helping out the process. Um couple of things that have already been, I won't need anywhere near to fifteen unless we have a lot of questions. Um couple of things brought up already. If you look at the map in front of you, I think it's in your screen. If you go down southwest on Cedar Avenue, you'll see three or four houses that have really narrow fronts. And the the thought was, well, the actual square footage is smaller than a lot of the neighborhood lots. The frontage and look and feel to the neighborhood is pretty much the same for a lot of those, a lot of those homes. Um also, in terms of uh maintenance, I I think the maintenance issue is legitimate to any neighborhood. Um I certainly don't like it when my neighbors don't take care of the yard and have trucks parked in front of the house and whatnot, whether they own or rent. Um but I'm not sure if it it really figures into this discussion. Uh right now, we just need to I'm not suggesting what you need to focus on, but I think for the for everyone concerned um right now is whether we want another single family home in that, you know, potentially created lot. Um I've I've had, um we've had several families live there. Some are cleaner, more, you know, tidier than others. And the current situation, they're fantastic people. Um just lots of kids and things like that. So I will use this as a as a basis for another conversation to try to keep the maintenance thing okay. But anyway, that's not why we're here. Um couple of positive things, uh factors in this, I think, is um you know, I talked to Jonathan with the electric and the power side of things, and we would actually bury I think the um uh the house to the northeast as well as the house that that we own, as well as the new house if it's approved. Uh they would have buried power lines. That's nice for the neighborhood. In terms of parking, um by virtue of having another driveway, um you're gonna have fewer students that are creating parking incidents, because I know that's a big deal in the neighborhood is that, you know, to have too many students jamming up parking and whatnot. Um in terms of infill, I think part of the philosophy of the infill um element in the plan is that we have nice new stuff and it has to reflect the the architectural themes of the neighborhood. But if it's nice and new and, you know, put any adjective in front of that you want, cute, repro design, whatever, um that's added value to the neighborhood, right? And so um I understand, I ta- I talked with McKay Jensen, he's the district um chair, you know, a few weeks back, and I told him we'd be doing this and um and he brought up some concerns, you know, the neighbors typically don't enjoy new construction and higher density and that kind of thing. But again, given given the width of some of the of the surrounding houses and the positive mitigation of parking and buried power lines and you know, new is nice. I I think that all creates a a decent case to have this approved, but that's of course, um you know, on your hands. Um I'm, any questions I have, I I could take it now or wait till there's public comment, but.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I do have a question. Can you explain the positive mitigation in parking? How do you foresee this helping parking?
So um if if you look on Cedar Circle, you know, where the red uh rectangle is, imagine a house in that um new lot area. Um there is going to be a driveway that leads to a garage. Um right now, um there might be two cars there that bother some of the neighborhoods. They might be walking to the law school or somewhere else and on at BYU. Well, if there's a driveway in a house, that's probably two spaces that those cars can't take. So if I'm not saying it's a, you know, panacea or anything, but it certainly um reduces the amount of temptation because there's just less street frontage.
Any other questions for the applicant? You have another one?
Can you tell us what's happening with the existing home? That is a rental unit, correct? Do you have renters in there?
Yeah, and.
And is there an A D U already in that facility, in that structure?
Uh there's, yeah, there is a, there is a basement there. Um the the lot in question that we would um consider building on um would be single family, of course. I think Erin already said that. Um and I I'm very sensitive to because I'm a, you know, I'm a neighbor too where I live. And you know, we don't want always more tenants, but we have to, like you said, there's diversity and we can't force who's going to live in a given house. But if it would please you all and the um city council, if it goes that far, um I would stipulate in a development service agreement or development agreement that um it would only be owner occupied, meaning we would build to sell or we would just sell the lot. And that's a much higher, I mean, the person could buy it and still put tenants in there, but it's a much higher probability that you'd have um owner occupied if you sell it, right? So anyway, and plus, the uh, I mean, I'm not saying this will happen, but um we might move to that house anyway. It the then that would, we we've we've just a little history. I mean, I'm I'm like one against twenty. It's like our whole neighborhood's here. Um I'm the guy who bought that thing, was nicknamed the scab house. It was in such a state of disrepair and terrible to look at and real eyesore. And we've done as much as we can to make it look nice. But the maintenance of the yard and things like that is kind of beyond my control at this point. So hopefully that will improve in the future. So anyway, if there's other questions, please.
So you're you're saying is there wouldn't be an A D U in this structure you would build, right?
Not not.
Not an accessory apartment.
Not planning on it, unless I sold the lot and then that's up to the property rights of the new purchaser, right?
And then the existing building does have an A D U. It does have an accessory apartment. Is that being rented, the accessory apartment?
Uh there is, there is two students in here that do who have dedicated, excuse me, who have dedicated um uh parking, they have a driveway. And that's that's going to be short term. We'll we'll likely either be selling or moving in the summer, so.
Any other questions?
Question, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alright, thanks.
Well, now open for public comment. Do we have any district or neighborhood chairs here for this item? Yes, please come forward. Uh you'll have three minutes to make your comments.
Okay, my name is Laura Maray. I'm the district neighborhood executive board member. Um so of the people that got ahold of me for feedback, some of them may have also sent emails to you and some of them are here tonight. There were nine households strongly against this. The number one issue was the parking and increase in traffic issues. Um preservation of neighborhood character, uh setting a precedent to start making smaller lots was a big concern for this. Um feeling like the maintenance was an issue and um maybe having this be another rental in the future not necessarily invested in the neighborhood, but more having, just having it as an investment for themselves seemed to be a concern. Um and the stress on infrastructure was brought up. Another person did point out that in the current zoning, if this were owner occupied, that the back of the property might be a good um A D U, a good candidate for an A D U and saying maybe that would be more proper to find someone who would be able to live there and have an A D U in the back and then make better use of that. So that's kind of the summary of those um that were against it that got back to me. There were four households that were in support of it with caveats. Meaning they feel that they know that there's a need for an increased housing supply. They don't feel like um there's big drawbacks to having smaller lots, especially some of them said it looks like a good space because it is on a corner and it would have that frontage. Um there would be concerns if it was maybe turned into yet another rental. I don't think anyone's worried necessarily about rentals in our neighborhood. It's more when they maybe fill up with students maybe exceeding the amount that maybe should be there and the many vehicles that come with that. Again, back to the parking. Um and many of them said that regardless of what happens to this lot, the parking down there is needs to be addressed in some way. There was also one household that was torn saying if it's just another rental unit, probably opposed, but if it were to be able to be sold and then owner occupied single family home, they would be in support of it. And I didn't have an answer as to you know, if there were stipulations for that.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to public comment, I want to read in uh or acknowledge that we've gotten several letters on this one. Um one from Chris Terak, another one from Rebecca Armond, another one from K Kori Wright, another one from Sula Janelle Tuttle. Sula again, uh Jennifer Woolley and Jansen Bradshaw. So we have read those letters and considered them. Yes, Erin?
So commission, uh if you'll excuse me to to interrupt the process here. Uh we were just made aware that there is a a zoning violation on the property through the admittance of the the applicant. Um title seventeen in our city code doesn't allow us to advance anything with a code enforcement issue on a property. Uh so we would recommend. Uh, so we would recommend that the planning commission continues items five and six at this point, uh, until that's addressed.
And just to be clear, I think you're referring to the ADU and a non-owner occupied home.
Yes, no legal ADU.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm wondering if, um, since we're possibly going to be continuing this most likely, if you could, um, give us information on potential other alternatives. Um, so one of the things re- suggested by the district representative was, um, to build an ADU in the, instead of. What are the restrictions on ADUs as a separate structure? Um, it within residential areas in the city? Are they only allowed in some places?
This entire neighborhood allows ADUs by right, uh, if you meet the standards of that fourteen thirty chapter.
Even if they're separate, cause I know there's, I want to say there's something.
Attached or detached.
Okay.
Same rule. Yep. So this entire neighborhood would allow that, uh, of course, with owner occupancy.
Owner occupancy of the main residence.
And things like that.
Okay.
Cause that seems to me like that solution suggested would address most of the concerns where the violation to be cleared. So just throwing that out there for future discussion.
Sure.
I'm curious if we continue this item. There's several people here ready to comment. Should we hear their comments first or should we continue it and have them come back?
I think we should hear their comments. They've been waiting the whole meeting, so.
Anyone disagree with that? Anna was gonna say the opposite.
The whole situation's about to change, so those comments will change necessarily. So I think it's redundant to have people speak. I think they got what they wanted. They kicked the can down the road.
They look like they want to speak. Come back another time. I say let's hear them now. It'll be continued. And they won't have to come back again because their comments will already be on record and carried over. That's what, if I were here for several hours, I wouldn't want to have to come back again.
I think I'm seeing some nods from the audience concurring there, right? So let's go ahead and do that. We'll do our public comment so that your comments are on the record, but do know that it's going to be continued immediately after that is finished. Okay? So if anyone would like to comment, please come forward. Please start by stating your name and city of residence. And you will have two minutes to make your comment, at which point you will hear a ding and the microphone will be muted.
Hello. I'm Suzanne Ron and I live on Cedar Avenue. And the reason that I bought into this neighborhood is because we have big, beautiful lots. And I have no problem with creating housing for people and I don't care who lives there. We can have all the diversity that we want. But what I do care about is the fundamental character change of the neighborhood and subdividing and subdividing and subdividing these lots. And pretty soon we look like a shanty town, not like a well-planned neighborhood. While parking and people cramming a bunch of students into the house is an issue in our neighborhood and it's really up to us as the people who live there to go after, you know, to force a code violation, you know, issues and things like that. I don't think Mr. Rand, with all due respect, he's not moving into that house with his wife. So I don't think for him to impose this sort of a, a subdivision on our neighborhood is right at all. We live in the R one eight. I want it to stay that way. This would fundamentally drive down the values of our property. It's already a problem. We have tons of students and they, we see it over and over and over again. People have an accessory dwelling unit downstairs and residents upstairs, and they'll put six people in there, which is completely against the code. And it's literally destroying our neighborhood. In the last 10 years, I've watched this neighborhood just nosedive. Renters, with all due respect, I've been a renter myself. They don't take care of the yards. They don't care where they park. It's a huge problem. I don't think that we would be denying people housing in Provo by not allowing this. There's plenty of houses. There's plenty of places where density is appropriate. This is not one. And I would ask you to please consider this is one of the few neighborhoods that we still have these big lots. If you even go up to Edgemont and places like that, they've subdivided and subdivided into these tiny lots with huge houses, no problem, but that's not what we bought into. So I think it's your job and the city council.
Thank you very much for your comment. Quickly.
Hi, my name's Austin Woolley. I live in Provo, just nearby this lot as well. Um, we bought a house last year, um, specifically because of the nature of the tree streets where we, when I finished medical training, we're trying to figure out where in Utah Valley we wanted to raise our families and we knew that the tree streets have this character. We knew that there were homes with yards. If you go there on any given summer night, there's kids playing night games. I, I, I joke around that you moved to the tree streets to live in the nineteen fifties without the sexism and the racism. It's, it's one of the few places in Provo where there's big trees and old houses with character. And if you want low density residential housing, build it in your own backyard because we purposely invest in this area. You're going to hear from other families that are young working professionals with young kids who are invested in this neighborhood for the next thirty, forty, fifty years. Not the kind of investment that you're going to get in a squash tiny house with a tiny yard. Uh, this, this neighborhood, we love and we're here for it. And, and this just doesn't fit the nature of the neighborhood. And the idea that adding another unit is going to reduce parking, I, I'd love to see the algebra on that. That's, that's crazy. There's already six cars on a daily basis around that, that house. So strongly opposed, if you didn't catch that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my name's Samuel Wright. Uh, I live right behind it on Cherry Circle. Uh, I know one of your main concerns is you want more housing. The code that this is in right now, R one eight allows for somebody to build an additional, eh, you know, dwelling behind as long as an owner occupies the house in front, correct? So if you were looking, if, if, if your objective is to add more housing, the code already allows it. What we're not looking for is exceptions for somebody who's not following the rules right now. We have somebody in our neighborhood and, and I talked to, um, I called and I talked and I said, hey, they're not following the rules of the zoning right now. Why should we make more zoning exceptions for somebody who can't follow the rules as is? And I, apparently the city just found out that he wasn't following the rules. I've known that since twenty twenty one. And I've called the city multiple times. We've, we've called and we've said, hey, this is not, this is not following, you know, from what I understand, you can have three individuals in a home in that zoning that aren't from a single family, right? Is that correct? I, that, he's been breaking that. So and I'd like to introduce him to a lawnmower. I'm sure he's a great guy, but they're cheap. I've got one and I give it to him for free. Um, but right now, if, if we're interested in more housing, we can do it without changing the zoning and show me another lot. It's four thousand square feet anywhere in the tree streets. And I'll let you change this one to four thousand square feet. That's ridiculous. We're not Laguna Beach. Like we don't need a four thousand square foot lot. Um, and especially don't change the rules for somebody who can't follow the rules right now. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bart Bradshaw. I live in the same neighborhood, uh, grew up there and came back because it's so great. Uh, two quick things. One, I'm just, I mean, this seems like an extreme exception, going from an eight thousand square foot requirement to a four thousand square foot requirement. So it seems extreme. I don't love the precedent it sets. I don't love the precedent of having a different zone within um, the existing zone for similar reasons to what everyone has said. Second one is I actually do own two homes in this neighborhood. One right across the street from me and I will acknowledge as a, someone who rents out a second home, it's extremely hard to make it a great investment. And the temptation for any renter in that area is going to be to give in to all of the students coming and saying, yeah, we'll just have three, but we're actually going to be have four. Is that okay with you? There's so many opportunities to turn this into south of campus. And this is, I'm, I'm wondering if the, the city would, um, consider this type of thing for the river bottoms. If we're trying to infill and there's point five square, uh, point five, what is it, uh, acre lots there, would they reduce it to point two five acre lots? Cause this, you know, this is like our river bottoms. This is our Sherwood Hills. This is where we live. And so we feel strongly about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Rebecca Armond. I live in, I'm a resident in the Wasatch neighborhood. So to start, I shared this map with you. You should each have a copy of it. This, this here, the concept plan on here is extremely misleading. If you look at it, we tried to make it to scale um, as close as we could to the actual satellite, um, view from Google Maps. So to start, I would like you to notice the garage on the bottom and the actual garage that is on the picture. And, and how much larger the garage is in proportion for one of them. And the other one is the red line that shows the setback of fifteen to seventeen feet. If you look at that, it aligns with the house. So there is not a setback of that fifteen to seventeen feet, if it shows that. One of the other things that you can notice on the left-hand side is that you should, it, it kind of, yes, my. Oh, sorry. I'm very, very nervous. So. Thank you. There was something else I was going to say. Oh, on the, on the, um, the sidewalk, the parking strip, he has shown six feet here. And I don't know if that, it doesn't show the eighty-four feet here in to proportion. If you look at it, I hope I'm making sense. I'm sorry if I'm not. Um, but it's to proportion from east to west. If you, this is east to west here, but it is not from north to south. And I think that, um, those, those need to be addressed because this is not what it, what, what's being rec- represented is not real. And it needs to be measured correctly, whether it is done by a, um, you know, survey, thank you. Or, or some other professional way, but it is something I think that needs to be, um, taken into account here. And as mentioned before, um, there's all the problems with the cars and I turned into pictures with a letter that I submitted and that's the way it is all the time. That isn't just general, this was, you can see it in the morning, you can see it in the evening. It is just a consistent problem.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
I'm gonna go, I'm nervous too. And, uh, I agree with me.
State your name, please.
My name is Deborah Harmon and if you look at the line right there, my property is right in back. So it would be to the east or northeast there. One thing on that property too, it was talked about, uh, maintenance. I know that I've had to redo. You know, it's mainly when the Simmons and Thompsons own the, they let a pile of junk stay there for about seven years and Elm Tree came up. Well, that Elm Tree split my, uh, cement pad from that that tree all the way back to my garage, which is about forty-four feet. So, and when Jeff bought the home in twenty-one, I went in and talked to Jeff and he let me go in and cut that tree down. But also too, at the same time, he was let me go in and I had to re pour the cement back there and that was about fourteen thousand for me. Right now on the other corner is, uh, trumpet line that has come up on their side and it's gone all the way through the fences. I've got pictures of that, but I'm going to have to redo my, uh, stone patio there now, cause it's little trumpet vines come up and they've cracked a bunch of places. That might be separate from it, but it's one thing that neighbors have to sometimes do. But also to looking at that line, if I remember right, on way back when, when we had the survey, the fence really should go back about a.
Okay. Thank you for your comment.
Hi, um, my name's Austin Segibo. I also live in the neighborhood. We've been here for about seven years. Um, I don't have a ton left to add. I think the biggest thing is, is it's an investment property, right? And I don't feel like a lot of these investment properties are really putting in single family homes often. And a lot of students are going through and I think the biggest thing is safety for our children that are riding bikes, walking around. Um, lots of these students just fly through the neighborhood and there's so many cars already parked in the, in the road. And so there's just not a lot of visibility sometimes when you're driving past the speed limit. Um, yeah, I think that's the biggest thing. I think uh, I think everything else that's been said is allowing exception after exception, it just continues uh, a domino effect. And so, yeah, I strongly oppose. We're friendly people in the neighborhood and we, we're not trying to oppose people moving into the neighborhood or anything. It's just, it's not, it's just allowing too much uh, leeway and approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Su Lao. I live on Cedar Avenue. You have my letters that you saw as well, and I just wanted to reiterate. Um, I live on Cedar Avenue. Jeff Rans does not. I appreciate the environment that we have in the tree streets as well as the green space that is there. Like was mentioned by some of my neighbors, that's one of the things that makes the neighborhood beautiful is having space to play, space to gather and, and space to garden. And these homes were designed with those sized lots. That's what we love about it. That's what we want to preserve. Chopping, starting to chop them in half sets a very dangerous precedent because the homes, the lots are all big enough where they could be chopped in half and you could put, in our lot, you could probably build six homes if you tore our house down and cut it up. Um, but that would really destroy the beautiful environment that we have and, and get rid of the green space that we enjoy so much. And that creates a sense of community that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public tonight? Okay. Not seeing any, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission, um, to continue the item. So do we need to set a time limit on that continuance or how does that work in this particular case?
Continue the item.
Just continue it straight up. Yeah.
Would you like me to do that?
That would be great.
Do you want us to make two separate motions for five and six, or can we do them collectively? Okay, I'll start with number five. I move that we, we don't even have to, we don't even have to forward a recommendation to the municipal council automatically. Okay? I move that we continue item five. Jeff Rans requests a zone map amendment from the R one eight zone to the LDR zone in order to create one new single family residential lot located at one thousand one east Cedar Avenue in the Wasatch neighborhood.
Do we have a second for the motion?
I'll second.
Hey, thank you. Um, any discussion on the motion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye. So item five is continued, um, unanimously. Item six motion?
I'll do that one as well.
Okay.
I move that we continue item six. Jeff Rans requests concept plan approval of a two lot residential subdivision to create one additional single family home in a proposed LDR zone located at one thousand one east Cedar Avenue in the Wasatch neighborhood.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that one too.
Okay, let's go ahead and just go to vote.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye. So item six is continued unanimously as well. Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.